All right, like to start this meeting if everyone can stand for the pledge of allegiance.
The party of the United States of America and you should be proud of your standing as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved second.
It's second. I'll figure the aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both. Ayes have it. Okay, first up we have a presentation from Red Hat. It's ready? Ready? Let me go ahead. Okay. So I'm filling, usually you see Peggy Muller here, and she was double booked tonight, so I'm filling in for her on Dave Mull. Worked with Peggy. So let's just go through the slides that we have here. So at the conclusion of the audit, there's four reports that are issued. There's the opinion on the financial statements, report on internal control, report on Minnesota legal compliance, and then a communication of those charges of governance. So we got a few comments on each of these. Next one is the, uh, first one is the financial statements, just addressing three questions. What do we do, how do we do it, what's the result? What do we do? Well, we determine that the financial statements are free of material misstatement and presented in accordance with accounting standards. There's two sets of standards we follow, one set by our trade organization, the EACPA, and at the federal level, the government accountability office sets out its standards as well. Result of our efforts are a clean opinion on the 2017 financial statements. Next, just one slide on financial information. This year's the general fund, uh, fund balance increased 139,000. I'm sure you're well aware of that. Just focusing on the variance column, revenues exceeded budget by 217,000 primarily of two things, permits.
Billing permits.
Billing permits, and then developer reimbursable fees. So it increased revenue and increased expenditures, and that's the reason for the negative budget variance on expenditures. But at the end of the year, increase in fund balance of almost 140,000.
And for that is also the 75,000 that we got from J. for the, for the.
Next is a report on internal controls. We don't issue an audit report, so to speak, and we don't audit your internal controls, but we have to gain an understanding of the controls that are in place so we can identify where there may be risks of material misstatement and adjust our procedures accordingly. One item that's noted in there, not anything different than prior years, is just segregation of duties due to staff size, and so we adjust our procedures to accommodate that or to deal with that. Next is a report on legal compliance. What we do is determine that the city complied with certain statutory provisions primarily having to do with financial activities. The state auditor has a guide that we're required to follow. There's seven categories, they're listed there on the slide. So to give you some context, in the cash deposits of public funds and investments, there's a requirement in Minnesota Chapter 118A regarding protecting the deposits that you have at the bank, either through FDIC or through obtaining collateral from the bank. So at year end, at Wells Fargo, you had a little over 5 million in checking and savings, and Wells Fargo provided collateral of 5.6 million, so demonstrating compliance with that statutory provision. So that's, it's just an example of the types of things that we'll look at. So the result of the transactions that we tested, no compliance findings for 2017. And then lastly is referred to a communication of those charges with governance. We're required to communicate certain things, and it's items that don't fit in the previous reports, whether there were any changes in accounting policies used by the city noting none. Where there are estimates in the financial statements, you have land held for resale estimated at 2.9 million, that you've had for a number, a few years anyway. Net pension liability that started in 2015, that's the city's pro-rata share of PARA's net pension liability, that's estimated at 446,000. A couple other items here, no difficulties in dealing with management and throughout the audit process, no disagreements with management. Just a reminder, and you're well aware of, is the special deferred assessments that you have that are in a bond issued debt service fund. Fifty, the 55% of that is deferred collection from green acres or senior citizen deferred. Really nothing changed from last year, just a reminder on that. And then you also have some inter-fund loans with the water fund in that quadrant of funds. So just a reminder on that, I'm sure you're well aware of that, and discuss that at budget process time. But interesting, summary then, a clean opinion on the financial statements, one item noted in internal control that's consistent with prior years, and then no items noted in legal compliance, so good results. And I'll try to answer any questions if you have them. Questions, anybody?
What you have before you is the audit, um, the year's data, and that will be put out on the website for anyone to look at. It is, we run on capital here, what the report you see is modified at all, so it's a little bit different format than what you're used to seeing in the budget process, but the funds nevertheless are all in there.
Okay. You have to adopt this or?
You have to accept the report.
Want to make a motion to accept the report?
Motion to accept the report.
Second. Any other discussion? I got that. All clear, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Both. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have the planning commission report.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Council. Tonight I bring to you two things. First is a variance request. This is on a piece of property that's on 190th, just west of Lexington. It's actually on Coon Lake, and that's what brings the variance. There's an unusual finger that comes up into the property. Now, a little history, Mr. Luck and Miss Denny purchased the property a couple of years ago. They actually come before the planning commission last year, and we sent it forward to you guys, to the council and the mayor for approval. A variation, or a variance that would allow them to build their structure within 45 feet of the high watermark. That being the change from the 75 foot that's currently required. Well, fast forward to this year, call up a builder, have him come out and get ready to build the decks on the back of the house. Builder says, oh, we're too close to that ordinary high watermark. That's what this variance is about. A request to, uh, for a variance to move the ordinary high watermark to 13 and a half feet from the deck. Hearing that, there was Mr. Spiegel and Becky Bosney from Anoka County had been on site, inspected the property, and said they would not comment on it. Therefore, they want to turn it down, nor would they accept it. Hearing that, and having gone through our checklist, it's with unanimous recommendation that the planning commission sends forward you the request for variance on this, uh, or this variance. Thank you, pardon.
Okay. Any comments? Can you take a motion to approve or deny the variance?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, good, second.
Second.
Any other discussion? All clear, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Both. Ayes have it.
Thank you, sir.
What else you got?
Mr. Curley. Mr. Mayor, um, also in front of you tonight is amendment to the ordinance. This pertains to five acre properties or plotted properties. The consul and mayor have recommended the attorney draft language to straighten out a situation where someone with a plotted piece of property doesn't actually have five acres when it comes to accessory buildings and animals. This language will actually add 1.7 acres to their 4.89 acres to put them over the five acre mark for a purpose of consideration when it comes to accessory buildings and animals. Bring this forward to you for preliminary approval because there still needs to be a public hearing on it.
So not, you didn't have a public hearing yet?
No, sir.
It was, it was discussions, so now their next day they'll have the hearing.
Mr. Curley, may I explain this here? It says, um, defining the word lot area, Section 78201. It talks about inclusive of the front of street right of way. It said front of street is a state road and exclusive of all areas lying within the right of way of the county's state road. So.
There should be a comma after road for one thing. It's not, it doesn't complete sentence, so.
There is a comma after road. But, but then the next sentence is going to exempt that from the lot size if it is deeded right of way.
Right, platter deeded up to that 0.17 acres. So that's the max adjustment for lot.
My only concern is if it was a, um, a five acre property that was on the, instead of the front 220 feet, it was the side 220 feet, then it wouldn't help that particular person. I understand that's probably a small percentage of the question, of the lots that would come into question, but.
Yeah, we could, that would be susceptible into a variance application in a few instances where that would come up.
Yeah.
It was, if, this is easier to catch, you know, 90% of the cases.
Okay. What do you guys think, do I get?
I'd like to ask Bill a question.
Go ahead.
I got a piece of property that will, I think, fall under this here. Should I just not be involved in a vote to this question?
This is what's called a matter of kind of general legislative intent, so the impact on you is the same as everybody else, so you can vote on it. If it were something that was, you applied for a variance, then you couldn't vote on it. But this is a legislative matter, matter of general intent, and so.
We all live here, so we'll apply to all of us.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, you have a question? Okay, so someone want to make a motion to send it forward as it is for a public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All clear, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Both. Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Fine job.
Council?
Good. Next up, we have some to go before, any of you have a vote to go before?
Hi. My name is Lori King. I live at 9650 Howard Lake Drive Northeast. I've lived here since 1976, seen a lot of changes. My first thing I want to talk about is I came home from shopping one night, and I saw that the, I live next to a little park, and all the swings were gone. The, I was never aware of this, it's right next to my house. Kids have used it since 1976 when I moved there, and probably before, and I, I don't understand why those are gone in the first place. And if I could, if that land would be up for sale, I would consider it. We have special needs kids that live down Iverson that use that all the time, and use those swing sets, and I don't know, can I set up a swing set in? No, it's not my property right now. So I was concerned, and I was hoping I could either, you know, purchase that or somehow get something up for those kids.
Mark, what are you, a moment, what happened, you were at the meeting?
Yeah. We had some concerns about the park not being ADA compliant, so that was number one. Number two is we felt it wasn't safe because there's no parking for people to go, you know, park a vehicle there and go there. Number three, lack of use. Number four, the cost of maintaining something that wasn't being used much. So the cost of bringing equipment up to date for something that wasn't being used much was a big deal. And we're talking about closing that down, and we had a person that wanted to use that part periodically, just happened to be a coincidence that night she stopped in. We told her, if you get enough petitions or talk to people, you know, that are interested in keeping it going, we would listen to that. Nothing ever became of it. So did we advertise that, Elizabeth, on the website?
I believe there was a survey that was on the website.
Right.
I had one together, a survey for the website, and it was this woman's responsibility to do the petition on her own.
And there was nothing?
There's, yeah, nothing.
Yeah, it was taken. So at that point, then the park board approved, and then the state to close down the park, and it came for a safety council, we decided.
And who voted on that?
Everyone.
We all.
We all.
I stopped in, I stopped, I'm a friend of hers. I stopped in here and seen the lady over here, and I offered, if you guys would put the swing set back in, and your tables so they got a place to set out. I would maintain that park myself, with my own equipment, everything, just so the kids could have a place to swing.
I understand the concern, I think the big thing would be a legal issue for the city.
Right.
Someone else is maintaining it, it's not under our contract, our insurance, our liability, so that's why we agreed to close out the park. And the land could be for sale, and we discussed it's doing nothing to city property now. If you're willing to purchase it, then maybe we could work on something on that.
Depending on the private school, you know, because all we need is just that little park area.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, Council, this to that point, the staff did look at their last meeting, the covenants on the property for park use essentially expire after 30 years. It's now been 30 years since that property was acquired, so it actually is available for purchase. We have to go through a pay notice and bidding process so that people have an opportunity to bid on what is essentially excess public land, but it would be available for purchase if the council decides to put it up in that package.
So it's a non-performing lot, less than five acres?
Yeah, it would be, it would be probably most attractive to someone who's adjoining the property so they can buy a property, but it wouldn't mean that others could bid on it.
Yeah, because all she's interested in is just that little park area.
Your property adjoining that?
Oh, yeah.
You're right next door.
Oh, yeah.
Right next door.
We could all lumber everything that comes after a storm.
Equipment to maintain and all that, it's just so kids can got a place to swing.
I mean, if you all did what you did with the, with the FPU, I guess.
Are you across the road, or are you?
Right next.
Right next to it.
East of it.
Yeah, so what we discussed, and obviously the staff view was that someone who's adjoining the park property would be most interested in the market.
Yes.
But that's, you know, that's a process we have to go through if you decide tonight to put those wheels in motion.
I say we do, we agree.
That'd be great.
Anything you guys could do to help with it, it would really help the kids need a place to.
I know.
Well, I guess the question will be then, the crosswalk and the signs for that. I don't know if that's going to be, JW, you plan to take that down?
That was the intent, if we were closing the park, then we'd need for the crosswalk.
Yeah, I mean, at this point, you might as well, you know, take it down, and if they do buy it, at that point, I guess it's really not our, it'd be our liability to maintain something for a private park.
Yeah, it'd be unusual to have a crosswalk for private property, right?
Right, so I think it should go on regarding this. Okay, someone want to make a motion to that effect?
So moved.
The motion would be to.
Start the process to.
Yeah, the process, yeah.
To dispose of the city, right?
Mr. Mayor, there's one other parcel that's in the same situation where we had that 30-year period. We talked about this one before, it's off a hill, we're a little guarded, it's landmarked, and there was some interest from the Jason property owner, and now that we're out of that 30-year, last year was 30 years. So if you would entertain.
Would the motion make your want to include that lot?
To include that.
Make a motion?
Mark, make a motion to start the process to sell both parcels, or put them up for sale.
Second.
All right. So one thing before, what about the pieces of law, rather, connect back to?
I didn't research that one, so I'm not sure the circumstances, each circumstances is a little bit different in this particular one that he says for my purposes, but after 30 years, if they won't, if the purpose is to stay with, then you can use it for another purpose or sell it. I don't know about Haggard Park, because I don't know how we acquired it.
I thought that you guys approached, because Wendy goes and now granddaughter, and I thought that we had started something with her, but then just went away anywhere.
Yeah, I, the one that I did approach was Bates Horn, and that family simply didn't want it, because that was acquired through Parkland dedication, so it first goes back to the family, but they didn't want it, so I'm not sure. I'd have to ask Jake what I started that one.
Maybe you should include that third piece there.
Okay.
The bigger thing, because that's been empty forever also.
Well, most of it's wet, like.
Go to third piece.
Second, I'll check you up in a few hours.
That piece is way behind the, I sell vegetables, not Broadway.
Yeah, that piece was a big portion required of our old, old.
Yeah, that piece probably is worth hanging out to, it's a pretty large piece.
Okay, get to it.
I don't know how many acres, it's larger.
Almost all. Oh, I walked there, when I was on the park floor, we all walked on it, we toured, it didn't seem that bad, I think that should be helpful on it, so.
We're not going to include that, that's for this case. Okay? Any other discussion? All clear, say aye?
Aye.
Both. Good luck.
Thanks.
All right, there you go.
I got one more.
Go ahead.
Yesterday, when I was out there mowing her grass, there was a four wheeler coming, running down the street, then he jumped over on the, well, he comes west and be on the north side of the street, and he was hopping driveways. I mean, as if.
Catching air, huh?
Pardon?
Catching air.
I'm really catching air. He's lucky somebody didn't come down Iverson out when he, when he started to do that, because he was really ripping.
Okay.
And like, like I said.
Tell us, sure.
When I moved there, here, it was a dirt road. So I've seen a lot of changes, and I don't see many patrols at all. In fact, I saw Forest Lake stop somebody, cop Forest Lake got, but I've never seen Columbus cop stop anybody from.
Can I, I ask? What, sure, go ahead.
I noticed something the other day, and I've heard some of your neighbors say that concrete trucks coming from.
Oh, yes, yes.
Is there a lot of them that come through there?
Oh, my God, and it's like, boom, and then, you know, they make so much noise, I mean.
I don't think that road is made for that.
No, I, yeah.
You don't want to be started on that road, so.
Well, we, I think it's a discussion we need to have, because they are, instead of, instead of going over by Menards and coming through Broadway, they're sneaking through on Howard Lake Drive again.
Oh, everybody is now, this is a shortcut now.
And we talked about.
I mentioned, yeah, I mentioned.
It should be 25 dollars an hour.
No, we're not talking about speed, we're talking about weaker suspension.
Yeah, and it's a noise to make.
Oh, we need noise breaks, huh?
Anyways, thank you, thanks for this.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, anyone else to go over the form? Okay, here, now we'll move on to the, for the letter, excellent, H13.
Mr. Mr. Curley, you're here tonight.
What up?
Mr. Mayor, Council? Were you going to read this?
Can you certainly read it, or if you just want to, if you just want to present here?
We read it, but.
Okay.
Could you just point the property out?
Yeah, I'll, I'll.
I was quite sure where it was.
Well, I'm not sure that the, there's a specific, you know, site at this point.
We're considering a couple sites.
But, but I'll, I'll pull up the general area. Well, why don't you start, and I'll try to figure out what else.
Okay, as I stated in the letter, we have a rapidly growing business. It's currently running out of a building in Blaine. We actually just moved into it last year, about a year ago, and we're out of space, and so we're looking for a larger piece of property where we could build initially 100,000, but size it for 200,000 square feet. And we're very interested in this property between Hornsby and the freeway, and it's commercially, currently zoned commercial showroom. But we know the city's plan is that it'll be light industrial when comprehensive plan is completed. And so we've been talking to Elizabeth about this, and it was discussed that we could request a text amendment potentially to have the commercial showroom zone description include distribution, which is our, we have basically a fulfillment process, pack and, pick and pack. It's like a little mini Amazon operation, and the product is bedroom linens, so it's a very clean, quiet type of business.
Mostly semi's coming in out.
Yeah, it's like maybe one container a day coming in and one trailer going out, and then like other smaller, like a UPS truck or something like that. So it's minimal traffic.
Currently, the property that they're looking at is its own commercial showroom, and in commercial showroom, from what I know, the distribution and warehouse is not a, like used in that district. And so it is guided in the company as a plan to be light industrial. When, when Mr. Curley and I had talked, he would like to start building this year. He doesn't, because I said to him, well, you know, it'd be perfect for next year, you know, everything will be in place, and he said, well, I don't have that time, I want to start construction this year. And so without doing a comprehensive plan amendment, which we talked about, that wouldn't really be cost effective for him at this point to do that. The only other option that I saw that we would be able to do would be a text amendment, unless our attorney came up with another way of doing this, but his use is not currently in the commercial showroom district, and he's looking at property right now that's north of 145th, but south of 152nd.
Yes.
So this is, right here is the kind of the 152nd area, and he's kind of looking in this general area for 12 acres of the property. And he realizes that there's no 12 hours, he's gonna have to configure it, or subdivide it, or go through a process to get 12 acres, but he would like to be in this area. But again, this area is a commercial showroom at the current time. In addition to that, which we have not talked about, in the commercial showroom, there are certain design standards, as in all three districts. And the commercial showroom district standards are a little bit higher, you know, for, for that use. We really haven't discussed what the design standards are going to be since we moved lines and we changed things, because I do think that, looking overall, what we thought the. Because I do think that, looking overall, what we thought the net worth of that whole district is going to be, that when you look at design standards, you're going to have to look at that for materials.
What are you planning on, steel building or a concrete?
We're considering both. The, there's substantial cost difference between the two. And so we would like to have the option for steel, but we wouldn't, even in our current building, which is steel in Blaine, is, we put a lot of concrete, on all four sides actually, in Blaine, but to be entrusted up, and it's a very nice looking building, but-
Steel would have a spoke roof then, or-
Yeah, yeah.
Instead of a buildup roof?
Yes, and we like the maintenance on the steel building. But we know that there's, you know, better resale for concrete buildings. But I mean, right now, we're not looking for resale, we're looking for, you know, business that we can be in for a long time. This would be our headquarters and, you know, long-term investment.
The design standards in the commercial showroom built area are not steel buildings? That would be concrete tip-up building?
And the lighting of the district is fifty, fifty percent. You can only have, you can only have up to fifty percent steel, otherwise it has to be other materials. And facing the, facing public right of ways, and in this particular case, he's got two public right of ways, you know what I mean, on front and back, if he chooses a property that faces the interstate.
Well, it's going to go light industrial, why would you go with that?
Because you'd be changing, you'd be changing the standard in the commercial showroom district, which I don't think you want to do. But you're, well, we're gonna, but it looks like we're heading towards going to light industrial.
But we're not, and that's the problem. So if, if we do, then, but that'll be too late. So, right now, we're looking at, I mean, if we did do the text amendment path here, we really couldn't do a text amendment on the design standard.
Right.
Because then we'd have a mixed district.
Yes.
You know, if you have one standard for everybody else.
So it sounds like if you went with the tip-up building, we'd have a better shot at getting it done this year. I don't know, price-wise, it's, I guess, twenty-five percent more.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, what do you guys think?
But if you, you know, I'd like to know if you, if you consider to approve it on a tip-up, you know, that-
Yeah.
Well, this is a part of the reason why we redesigned or re-classified that area, it's for this, we just got a jump on it. But I would like to see a tip-up versus standard.
Yeah, no, I mean-
I think it just sets a standard for that whole area. I wouldn't want to see any stupid one, I'd really be honest with you.
I agree with you, Mark.
And that's what I figured you were going to do, when you changed the code, I figured you were going to revisit the design standards.
Because you do want to maintain that standard, especially here, so.
Well, other buildings in that district already have that standard.
Right. So, back to the initial question, you guys on board with that concept? I mean, that would allow pretty much anyone to come in and put up that same style you use anywhere in that area?
Which, distribution warehouse?
Exactly, but on the corner?
Not commercial retail, commercial, it's the, he's in, he's in the, the district is the commercial showroom.
Versus showroom?
Yeah.
And where does that stop, where does that stop on there?
It's, it's either right.
There you go.
So, right now, where he's located is in this yellow district. And so, right now, that's the only, only area aside from the area that's-
So that, that wouldn't be too bad, then, it just wouldn't include the, the retail, which is a red home.
No, it would not include the red, at all.
No, that's where we're extending the light industrial through there.
Not the red, a little bit into the red.
Just on that east side, yeah.
Yeah, now, is it a property, you guys see, oh, well, that's, how long do we keep the standard up? So are you looking for direction on this, or?
The direction, because we can prepare a code amendment. So the code amendment would allow the distribution and warehousing in that CS district, as long as they continue to meet the design standards.
And if we were to go this direction, do you feel that this would be a conditional use, or a permitted use?
I don't know.
It determines the process, yes.
Yeah, if we do a conditional, then yes, come before with all the condition. If you do it permitted, then sign it, go. Seen as, I'd say maybe conditional, seen as it's a change of that area.
Just for, you know, so just so they know that they have to go through a conditional use permit process.
Yeah.
But you have to do, you have to do subdivision anyway, unless you find a law, you know, so we just do it concurrently.
Yeah, we could run the text amendment subdivision and disuse with all, in the same sequence.
Yeah.
So are you basically approving it?
Well, no, we're just recommending it to go to the planning permission.
Well, I think what they're doing is giving you directions, saying that, you know, the council, although they won't take a role, they're, they're saying that, they're giving you directions that they think it's a good idea. So now it's up to you to kind of get your big work together to actually bring the application through.
Yeah, I just don't want to spend our time, because I mean, we're out of time, and we, you know, and we've got a lot of work to do, no matter where the site is, before fall, to, you know, get something going.
But from a legal standpoint, the council can't pre-approve an application.
Okay.
All they can do is give you their sense of it, so.
And it's a good sense.
The sense is good, if you can go with the tip-up, that you can fly right through, but depending on if you get aware you're going to go, or what other conditions you break in, that we, that's all the rest, they hold up.
Okay.
It's going to be alright.
Right, and so the applicant, you would make the application for text amendment, condition use preventative, and if you need to divide property, subdivision, those will all come through on kind of a sixty-day sequence?
Okay. Alright.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in.
Thanks.
Good luck.
Uh, luck, it's a lot of hard work. Okay, senior center discussion, maintenance, age fourteen.
So what I have before you do is, there's a letter from the senior center, senior agenda topic, and then there's a handout that's in front of you, that is the actual agreement that we have with the senior center. And the reason why I gave you the agreement was, kind of outlined what, what our responsibilities are versus the senior center's responsibilities, as a kind of a guidance for you to address the letter. I thought maybe someone would be here tonight, but it appears that there is a review of our resident senior center.
And just a quick summary of what those provisions say. The landlord's responsibility is for the major equipment, including kitchen equipment and the building systems, you know, HVAC, that sort of thing. And then the tenant is responsible for regular maintenance and repairs of the facility, personal property, including appliances, oil, and so on. So, that's the legal requirement, and you of course remember the multiple means they had over the cleanup and improvement of that space.
Yes, and it's an old space, and it's old floor tile, and it's old, it's, it's, um, it's not brand new, it's had anything over there. I, I'm not sure what the switch plates are. You know what the switch plate issue is?
I, Jim-
The switch covers?
One missing, or two ruined?
I don't know.
They cost a half a dollar.
I, I didn't know that we were supposed to replace them, I think that was every-
It was never an agreement.
It was never a plus, so, I, they were not switched, I mean, they were not.
And cleaning on the oven, I mean, the oven's used constantly, I don't know what you can say about that. Corners of the floor were not cleaned, that, it looked pretty clean while I looked at it last time, it was clean. The finish on the floors is, it's a maintenance item, it's got to be continuously, you've got to relax and repair your floors, I mean, and I don't know what's the deal on the blinds, were the blinds-
Just drops a ball.
Would the facility be cleaned or replaced, or was it, you know, torn or what?
My understanding that, that the, they indicated that the holes were broken. But we don't own the blinds, the city doesn't own the blinds, the senior center owns the blinds. So if you look at the lease, they're, they're responsible for their own maintenance of the blinds. Now, if someone wanted to volunteer to fix the blinds, I think that's what's the situation here, that there was-
But, are the, the lines are attached to the building, right?
We didn't buy, we did not buy it once.
It doesn't really matter, they're attached to the building. It, it's about whether it's real or personal property, and most personal property is not attached to the building.
Well, they'd be considered a fixture, right?
Yeah.
They're fixed to-
Right.
Yeah.
So, they could maybe argue that because it's attached to the building. I haven't looked at them, I'm sure they're screwed in, right? So, obviously not to hire builders, but.
Close. The question, I think, Mr. Mayor, is if you want to go beyond this lease based upon your discussions, and if so, what should we communicate to them? Because if you don't, if you want to stick to the letter of the lease, they don't have a right to withhold rent on these maintenance items.
Have they withheld rent?
They're, they indicate that they're preparing to, we will be withholding rent due in July. It'll be better for our graph.
And they can do that?
No.
Well, they can, but that's what happens next. No, they can withhold it, but what happens next is, what happens next?
Yeah.
What's that, a lock, or whatever? Pretty much, I mean, there's a, there's a, what's the, uh, what's the condemnation?
Condemnation clause?
Your premises, there's nothing taken. Well, the rest of it's not here, so.
No.
There's got to be termination clause part of this, right? And what, do you remember that, what that was?
Uh, I don't, but, you know, the standard is, you terminate for cause if someone doesn't pay rent. That's a breach. So the only question remains is whether there's anything on that list that was discussed a year ago that you want to do. And if not, we'll tell them that maintenance is their responsibility. If there's something on that list that you feel like you're committed to, then we include that as well.
The blind, the blinds we discussed.
I think we did talk about the blinds.
We did talk about the blinds. If the switch plates are missing, I'll go replace them in whole box.
Okay.
Uh, that's a safety thing, but I don't think they're missing. They painted, I think they wanted to match the, or just get them with the- Well, there's a difference between that and putting the old ones back, huh? Not that it's a big deal, but that's affecting on their behalf. Alright, I'll put plates on, I'll just donate my plate.
Bye.
The blinds we did discuss, I think we have to address that, we told them we would take care of that.
This says repair and replace, and I, there must be broken ones? And anybody don't, condition with the blinds?
We looked at, Jim and I looked at the blinds, say, I don't think the blinds are broken, but the, the strings on all the blinds are all tangled up, and it doesn't go up and down very well. But that's fairly typical of-
Blinds?
Blinds.
Come to the ones at my house, it's like.
But again, if, you know, it would be very expensive to replace all those blinds.
Okay.
I'm not saying that you put it to a, but I'm just saying is, it's just, it's not a hundred dollar deal.
I agree with Mark, we should make sure they're functioning, whatever it takes to make sure they're functioning.
So, can we say?
Functioning one's fine. Okay, functioning one.
Okay, okay.
So would it be fair to say, remind them of the responsibility maintained, that the city council, are we directing staff, or?
Uh, yeah, staff.
Okay. Alright, that staff will re, replace switch plates, and look at the, the blinds to be repaired, that will not be replaced.
Exactly. Cleaning is cleaning.
So today, they had a food inspection, and, or, I'm not sorry, on Tuesday, they had an inspection by the food inspector. And there were several things that came out on the inspection. So the inspector went to the stove, and the hood does not have the proper tab on it to say that it was cleaned recently. So apparently in-
There's a certification to that?
Apparently, when you have a professional person clean the hood to that type of oven, they put a sticker on it. And there isn't a sticker on the hood, so they wanted to know when the, when the hood and exhaust was last cleaned.
Okay, yeah, I, I mean, it's been used since it was cleaned six months ago, nine months ago?
So, exactly, so we had it, we had it cleaned, you know what I mean, I don't, I won't say professionally cleaned, or, I mean, it was cleaned.
But it was cleaned, yeah.
And then they asked whether the fire marshal was through, because apparently the marshal, fire marshal, there's some sort of, sort of indication they do for hoods over ovens. And I'm, I'm going to call Al, because I don't know what that certification is. So, these are things that they got written up for, that they have to address.
So, so if we had a professional come back in this state, right? Then they have to clean it after every time they use it?
Yeah.
I would think.
I'd agree.
Well, I don't know if you clean all the ductwork, you clean the Jason area stuff, but you don't go in the duct and wipe everything out? Uh, I, why don't you find out about that safety thing, because I, I don't know anything about that, I've never heard of it.
There's a gasket on one of the faucets that was leaking, that they, they would like repaired. And they also asked whether, and it's, it's not on this list, um, oh, here we go. The last line says, it is also our understanding that the city council agreed to replace our two outside doors.
We never did that, we did.
So the, the-
Yeah, we talked about doors.
The doors on the, the east, North Wall?
So Jim and I looked at the doors, the, we can repair the, the doors, but I think it's more about the entryways that are a problem. Because they have the high, you mean, you have to kind of step up, and when you have whoppers and wheelchairs, it is hard to get over the, what do you call it, threshold?
Threshold.
And when the, when the group that was doing the repairs were in, they said they did as much as they could.
Without redoing the stoop and everything.
Exactly. So, I guess we want to know, do you, do you want us, do we do the stoop, do you want us to?
You end up, you end up fixing the slope on the, on the entrance, you end up putting in asphalt and having marked, handicap stalls, and at what point do we say we don't? You could spend forty thousand dollars on that entrance, but easily.
I was going to say, my estimate was thirty, yeah, thirty thousand dollars, because Jim said that he'd have to redo the, he can redo the concrete, but then the slope is not right for wheelchairs. The handicap parking is not up to standard. So where, where is it, do you want us to stop? We're willing to do some of the work, but we just don't know how much you want to do and where to stop at this point.
Well, was this door repair in the minutes? I mean, I don't remember the door repair.
Bill, do you remember what they talked about on the door repair?
We, but, I don't care, something is there. I, I don't remember exactly, I just remember talking about repairing the door, but you said they were already in the ditch.
Well, we did repair the panic hardware on the back door, and they, they did the best they could on the threshold. I don't know what was wrong, I don't know physically what's wrong with the door.
I think, it's not rotted out like these other doors were, is it? No?
Not, not that I've noticed.
Is the door delaminating or anything?
Doesn't appear to be.
Okay, so-
I mean, the biggest problem that I see is the, you know, there's a too much height difference.
Sure.
Because the stoop has sunk and-
The stoop doesn't have a foundation underneath it?
I would assume not.
So it's floating up and down every year with the frogs?
I don't even know if it comes up anymore, I think it's just down. So, I, I mean, it's, it's always that low, so I don't ever see it come up.
We are in pole building, Dave.
I mean, we can fix that, I mean, we can take it out.
Or my jacket, or do whatever, but it's just going to move without, without footing.
Well, you could pin it to the concrete of the building.
Might help, but.
But I mean, you could make, you could make, we can make that better. Would it be, would it stay perfect forever? I don't know that, but would it be better than it is, yes?
Still wouldn't be compliant.
No, eighty-eight, so.
No, because-
I think once you touch it, though, I think you really then you're required to be compliant.
Yes.
So that's why, it's a, can't work, you can't just do it.
Agree. As soon as you make the door repair, the stoop repaired, now you're looking at-
Well, the door repair is the door, but the stoop is, brings you into the rest of it. What do we do, guys, you guys want to, on that path, or not? Danny, what do you think?
I don't, I have no opinion on the matter, Mark. I say we just do the couple of corrections we can, and you're opening Pandora's box. I mean, we're, this building isn't worth putting that kind of money in, but, I mean, for something that's not a long-term goal in the city.
I believe the rent, the rent reflects that, so.
Jeff? Yeah, we should just make the, make more repairs.
Okay, Bill?
I agree.
Alright, so, that's got to be something there.
Yeah.
Do what you can to be compliant with the, the lease.
Alright.
Okay, and here's the work.
Just a few updates on the I thirty-five ninety-seven project. So, again, this is the future Hornsby intersection. What it's gonna look like when it's all said and done on ninety-seven. Hornsby itself is, we'll have four lanes coming into intersection. As we hold off, it'll, um, go down the three lane with the center of the left turn lane. I don't have Hornsby Street showing on here. What I did wanna show is that, um... So, this basically is attached with that. So, the interchange itself, um... It's still up in the air with the design build project, exactly what's gonna be done on ninety-seven this year. Right now, they're anticipating working on the east side and getting at least half of the, the roof and diamond done. But they'll actually get done this year, remains to be seen, whether it'll look like through the winter. One thing I did wanna point out is it's not a dungeon yet, this doesn't show the ponds, but if you recall, there's a, we had a small pond by the oneran of this location. There's gonna be a pond on the, on those six property here, and there was going to be a pond on the city property down here. There's probably a eighty or ninety percent chance this pond's gonna go away, that it's not needed with the, with the final design calculations are now being done. So, that, that pond likely go away and the storm sewer, have it run down, you're gonna get to, but obviously it's gonna go away as well, so... There's a good chance that might not be needed.
It's a good thing, right?
Correct. So, not using up the city's hydro, down there by Old Hornsby. But that's what it's supposed to look like when it's all said and done. Just kind of a funding update, too. The last bond that was, bond bill that was passed took care of the issue from last year with the nine million dollars that the county and the city had gotten for the county's projects on fifty-four and Hornsby Street. So, now we, the city has bonding money, which is local road improvement money for Hornsby Street and half the, um... Half the signal. And if you recall, we previously had been, received a grant for some work on ninety-seven, the cooperative agreement money. We had three hundred and forty-six thousand that we had gotten a couple of years ago, so we'll be using that for the improvements on ninety-seven and the other half of the signal. And then, uh, we met with the, met that a couple, about a month ago, they're gonna contribute another hundred thousand to the city, so a cooperative agreement grant. So, hopefully we'll be closer to covering all of us, the whole Hornsby and ninety-seven.
Dennis, that'll be timed, that's, that'll be a timed intersection.
Um, yeah, it'll be interconnected with the signals on the roof and back, different lane.
Yep. How about with the, uh, quick shift light?
No, will not be done for that. I don't think so.
And has we heard anything about, uh... They're ramping us up for you to see all the lanes, but are they gonna increase the lanes going into Hornsby? So, two lane, maybe making it a four lane eventually? Have you heard anything about that?
Um, which?
Ninety-seven?
Ninety-seven?
Yeah. 'Cause you can see it right here, we're set up for it, but it goes down to two lanes, you know, which is quite...
No, no, they have that in the, um, quarters of commerce program and there's about a hundred projects that wanted funding, but only four got funded. Some of the bigger freeway projects, a couple of state projects, so I think that's quite a, quite a few years on. There's a lot of swamp along the way. But, that's one thing we're dealing with, too, is we're widening, as part of the city's improvements, we're widening ninety-seven with some state money. We're dealing with wetland impacts and some additional railway, probably have to get earned. Also, I wanted to give a quick update on the county's project, so on the other side of the freeway. So, as we cross over and here's how they... You've all seen this before, but the, um, the roundabout project on twenty-three on the Lake Drug and fifty-four, so... There's about a ninety percent chance that they're actually gonna split the project and get the roundabout built this year yet. So, that's the plans they're going forward, they just have final plans. Tomorrow, going to state aid for review. They would split the project, um, build this section and put in the roundabout and just, on both legs and stop above here. And then next year, they would let the, the thirty-four real line project. So, that's their plan for now. So, you could still, this year yet, starting in August, like, August, September, they would be doing the bypass. So, we're, we're gonna have a two-lane bypass that comes up around the north side. While they'll probably build it. That way, that gets them out of the way for the design build project, which is this green piece, to come through that actually, so they're not impacting each other. One other thing we're working with the county on was, um, you see there's a pond up here, there's one here in the corner, and there's one down here. This pond, storm sewer comes down, will come down fifty-four and dump into that pond. We're working with them to, um, size the storm sewer, so that this city parcel here will be able to shoot the storm water through the storm sewer, and they'll have to get a large pond on this side. That way, we won't need any pond in the parcel. So, when that soil ever develops, whoever develops it, the storm sewer will be there and they could work with the county to increase the pond and not have to take up any more area over here. Doesn't, not encompass this area, it will encompass more of these. So, I think that's good, there's a lot.
Okay.
That's fine.
Boy, they really moved down a lot of concrete on thirty-five, you know, short period of time that I've noticed. They backed up the concrete factory on our, on Columbuson property, but it's got, I don't know where they moved it to, but in a matter of days, it's got...
The back one?
Yeah.
They went to Stacy?
Hour?
Huh? They went to Stacy?
They moved it up to Stacy. 'Cause I read on sixty-one.
Yeah, they really moved, I mean, they really moved the concrete off the asphalt.
Will they come back?
They'll come back.
They got a lot of concrete for around here.
Yeah.
They got a lot of concrete around here. I'm sure they're, they done around here.
No, they're not done, but they've just shifted. Bill, they're pouring on this guy, they want...
Nothing further.
Nothing.
Council report, Danny?
Nothing to report.
Martin?
You wanna talk fire order, or you wanna have that?
You can have it, Mark. You have fun. Go ahead, you had a good time.
Alright, cool. Uh, we had a fire board meeting last week and, uh, our inspector we hired to do the pre-planning inspections for Columbuson and Hornsby are way ahead of the ballgame. They got thirty percent of Columbus done and sixty-three percent of, uh, Hornsby are already done. Way ahead of schedule. And, we got hired to do that?
A lady out of, like, there?
Yeah.
Fire for, uh, Hugo.
Hugo, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, she's really a kicking a lump, they thought, you know, doing more twice what she, they thought she would do, so, that was good. Uh, then we got an old truck that's got a cracked frame, so we have a couple of them are pretty old, so they're talking about, about the possibilities of trying to maybe get them fixed or if they ain't worth it, or proceed to get some new ones. Tanker truck, is it two tanker trucks that have cracked frames? One is already fixed, wasn't it?
The one is cracked. There's just the one that, well, they're both cracked, the one, but they, they, the one is one of them all cracked, the other one is out of feature crack.
But, uh, the trucks are twenty-something years old. Uh, so, we're trying to figure out what to do with that, that's about all we have. Let's have a statement.
Yeah, yeah. Jeff?
Cable commission meeting, uh, this afternoon, Scandia will be leaving, uh, twentieth, I think, of June. Uh, Hornsby attorney's gonna do, joint powers gonna relook at that and come up with a contract. I think they're gonna contract out, there's some private stuff for meetings and stuff, I guess, just to that.
Meetings?
Uh, there's constant meetings, they'll still film them, we'll still film them and, uh, charge for, for meeting. So...
Scandia will.
Oh, Scandia, oh, I didn't say Hornsby.
No, Scandia, then Hornsby's attorney, there's a joint powers agreement.
Between us and them?
Yeah. In the June, they're gonna start putting in an audio video here.
Yes.
Yeah, it's gonna start a pre-some, there are boxes over there, most of which are something else.
Yep, that's a computer.
Okay. Uh, then we also agreed to get, uh, fifteen thousand dollars in purchases for equipment for filming right now, for education with the high schools and stuff. We invited the Hornsby principal to our antimunion next month, we're gonna talk about, uh, here. Kinda agree with what I have with...
For the room?
Yeah.
For that school?
Yeah, that's all I have.
Yeah.
So, my only concern was the Zukowski trucking deal. So, they're, they were supposed to put their trees in and they didn't, apparently did their shrouding or their, for their lights to done properly, so...
June first was the deadline, in order for them to plant trees, and they missed the deadline. We received an, an email, and they've asked for a three-month extension. However, the neighbors, or neighbors, I've called and indicated that they felt that the trees should be up, because that was the agreement.
They agreed.
Yeah.
Three months away. Plant them down, get them done with, so they agreed to do it.
Yeah, they came in here in a rush to get it done, and we did everything we could to get their agreements done, so they could build that here.
So, I, I think you should send a letter to the council, if that's...
I agree.
They made a deal.
We should donate it for them, right?
We rushed to get their deal done for them, we did everything we could and, and the neighbors were settled down and agreed upon what they, what they said they were gonna do, they needed to do it.
So, thirty days, they completed within thirty days.
Yeah.
Okay.
And they're gonna have to do something with their lights, too. So, then the other thing was is the, is the, uh, forest land contracting. So, you said they're done the twenty-fourth of June, so does that mean the properties are coming into compliance now, they got their slopes and their bonds ready?
Yeah.
All that other stuff?
Have you, Danny, done any inspections out there for the finishing, for the, uh, for the boundary area?
No, not since our last update.
So, that needs to be, that needs to get, what that, we need to get that wrapped up, like we said, like we told...
We will have it wrapped up. So, they're gonna have to, you're, I think you need to make another inspection to make sure they're gonna make their deadline to...
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
We did, I mean, the property owner several months ago to, to put them on notice, that they need to start working on wrapping up and doing a, a reclamation plan. At that time, we talked about different, um, subdivision options. Um, so the, they won't, under the permit, they won't be able to haul dirt out for commercial purposes, but they will be able to for reclamation purposes. So, it's not like they can't run trucks, uh, because they, they have to be able to reclaim the land, um, after the, the permit's out.
But if you're, before the... My interpretation of what we, our agreement, our memorandum of understanding, whatever we had, was it's gonna be done by the date.
Yeah, that's what they told us.
And, yes, and so the trucking would be, will be done, but they have to do the restoration plan, so that the restoration has to be completed.
Is that, like, bringing the black dirt back in, or is that...
No, I think everything would be on site, right?
It's gonna be, it's gonna be on site. They didn't haul out, the, I think the issue is, they didn't haul out as much material as they thought. So, they're halfway, they're, I wanna say it's gonna be halfway done. And now, it's like, okay, now what do we do? So, they need to come up with a plan, not another plan, but Plan D.
So, the haul-out roads are still there?
Yeah, right, and so...
It's not, it's not reclaimed, so...
The idea was the haul-out roads were taken out last and then you got a big bomb.
Well, right, if, if they were able to remove so much material, but they weren't, because, you know...
They didn't have enough staff.
Didn't have staff.
So, they do have to come up with a Plan D, and they do plan a subdivision, they do plan to build either, I mean, one or two or three houses. There's not a lot of land left, they gotta figure out what to do with the easement, the road easement. So, there are some things that have to be decided, um, in order to move forward. And we did, we did indicate to them that they need to bring in a plan. Jesse has talked to them and indicated to them that they need to bring in a plan, we just haven't seen a plan.
And essentially, they go from being in mind in operation to, uh, reclamation and subdivision operation, which doesn't require any reuse permit. Uh, but I, I believe that probably everybody had an expectation that by this time, it would be further along in the reclamation.
I was, I was assuming that directly, the tape be done off at the same time.
Right.
I mean, how much does it take to get the back going there and clean out the haul-out roads and, I mean, they're gonna need some of that for, for pads to put their houses on and stuff, you know? I don't know.
Well, everything they do is approved through Rice Creek, right?
It's, I'm sorry, through Sunrise, so...
Through Sunrise, right.
Yes.
So, there's some steps to be done, but they will not have the legal right to remove material after, um, twenty-fourth, twenty-fourth.
So, Dennis, do you remember, was there enough black dirt there that...
I believe there wa, there was, they had a couple of stockpiles.
Okay.
And...
For topsoil?
Yeah. For the most part, they had their, following their pads, their high ground to build on, from the north, northeast corner or side, pretty much established.
Good.
So, and there are haul roads in between the ponds, so they did get those mostly excavated, low enough to where one of the waters were full and it's covered. But they never did get into that first cell, or like, they're like one, one and a half cells, if they were thinking maybe they would.
Good.
Okay. There we go. Did we get anywhere? I mean, they understand the twenty-fourth, right?
For you.
Yep. We've got some interested neighbors, so can I add things?
Yes.
If they're coming in, they're fixing stuff, but if they're going out...
If they're calling out, that's a problem.
Alright, that's it.
That's it.
Okay. I don't have any else? Um, public works report?
No report.
No report? Public information coordinator report?
I do have something in my account today. Um, we received a complaint about a dirt bike track on Camp Three Road recently. I understand that there was an agreement, um, with another property in a different area of Columbus about, sometimes they could ride their bikes. Um, and Elizabeth and I wanted to bring up the question to you all and see if we wanted to go look around at the neighborhood meeting again, to sit everybody down and come up with an agreement about days and times that they can ride their bikes.
Whereabouts on Camp Three? Down, down the...
In the gravel part?
I was just gonna say, it's, yes, it's definitely, it's definitely on the gravel part, I'd say halfway down.
Okay. Yeah, that seemed to work last time, I think that's a great idea, they're willing to do it.
Okay. They indicated, the people riding their bikes indicated that they would prefer to not set down days and specific days and times that they ride, that they'd be willing to say, um, I'll ride six to eight hours a week, is kind of what they said. And I haven't spoken again to the person who complained about that, but...
Are they complaining that it's odd hours or...
It's noisy.
Late at night?
It's noisy during the day, all the time.
Okay. That, four strokes or two strokes? No? Is it, I, I whiny noise or both? 'Cause there, there is some, some, some of the two strokes are really pretty loud.
They can muffle everything.
The four strokes are pretty loud, and not as bad as some of the two strokes, and, um, like, if you ride in the forest, you got a spark arrest or... So, there might be some...
You know, for the, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
For the, uh, last time around, which is now almost a decade ago, um, the trade-off, now just so the people who are operating understand the trade-off, is the city, the council at that time avoided the need to be more regulatory, in other words, have hours and noise levels and all that by virtue of the riders being more cooperative with their ideas of neighbors. So, that's, that's what they avoided ten years ago, by having some reasonable, you know, private agreement.
Do you think that's something we need to look at?
No, no. No, I mean, I, I don't like listening to the lawnmower noise, but it's part of other people enjoying their property.
Well, as far as I'm saying, at nine or ten o'clock, I'm just saying it happened, I'm just saying, is it regulatory, can't ride it at nine, ten o'clock?
You can't ride it after ten, before six or seven?
Well, you know, the LBCA has noise regulations, you know what I mean? And so, if they can abide by the noise regulations, they can ride whatever they want, you know what I mean? So, it depends on, it depends on how you wanna regulate it.
Which would generally mean that you couldn't ride after ten and before seven?
Right.
Because it's too noisy for sleep.
And, uh...
That's right.
The same thing goes with guns, I mean... You know, I, I know of an instance, just recently, where someone was having a, a wedding and they went to another person and said, please don't shoot on this day, and they said, okay. It's just that simple, I mean, you gotta work with your neighbors, you know?
Those are, that's really the two choices, either you come up with a schedule and the neighborhood agrees, you know what I mean? Or you say, we're... you know what I mean, or you say, you say to the people that are complaining, "We don't regulate it unless it, unless it exceeds M P C A rules."
Okay, so you look for a money in the meeting?
Okay. If that's the direction you want us to take.
Try it. Doesn't hurt anything. Okay, anything else?
That's it.
So do you have a Treasury Report?
So, um, Bill put together a Treasury Report for you. So we did not have any receipts for this two-week period. Our disbursement is gonna be a hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars. And then the empty balance is four million, two hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Okay. Why didn't there's a meeting on the evening, is that correct?
On the twenty. And there are two, actually three now.
Okay, calendar meetings on page fifteen, I have it, Dan, watch it do a turn.
Go for it.
Off your thigh.
All right.